I mean, that's the ticket. The building.
Yeah.
There it is.
All right, we're gonna call this P and Z meeting to order at four o'clock. First thing on our agenda today is approval of the meeting minutes from August the 4th. I reviewed the balance and my recollection, they look okay to me. Any questions or any corrections?
No. I make a motion to approve as presented.
All right, we have a motion to approve. We have a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion approved. So we're gonna move on to the public hearing phase. And the first thing on the agenda is 3A, request for a sign variance. You wanna take us through this, Drew?
Chairman, real quick if I may. I just wanna announce 3F, the conditional use permit on San Jacinto Drive, has been withdrawn by the applicant. So anyone here that wants to stick around for that one, we won't be hearing that today. That case has been withdrawn.
So if you signed up to speak on 3F, there's no reason to speak because it's taken off the agenda.
With that, we'll roll into 3A. 3A is a request for a sign variance in accordance with Chapter 92, Signs, Section 9214 for variances. This is at 715 Water Street. With that, I'll actually turn it over to the applicant. Do you wanna just explain the project?
Something? Great. I didn't, I didn't really prepare anything. So, we are the Arcadia Live. 717 is actually our address on Water Street. We're applying for a sign variance. All of the codes that are currently listed in the signs section doesn't specify anything for our unique type of sign. We would like to have a marquee sign on the front of our box office. Right now, it's hard to locate the box office. If you're driving by the Arcadia, unless you know you're looking for it, you don't really know that it's there or what's happening. So this would be a way for us to kind of show Kerrville and visitors what the Arcadia is exactly, that it's a theater, that we have events, live music, that type of thing coming every week. We have a rendering that we had designed by someone, a girl, a young architect that grew up here in Kerrville. It's a smaller version than what we've had before. I don't know if you guys remember the old marquee sign that was out front of the Arcadia before it became the Arcadia Live. It was quite large, and I believe it was taken down. It was a fire hazard in between the 30 years of the Arcadia's vacancy. So, basically, it's a classic marquee sign, kind of romantic Hollywood style. We're open and flexible with the final design of it. But this is a good rough draft of essentially what we're looking for. It'll have the light bulbs around it, really classic, nothing too obnoxious. It is in accordance with the sizing that would be required for a canopy sign. And we'll have like established 1926 to kind of pay homage to the history there. It will likely not be read. I believe it's gonna match the front Arcadia sign. It's in the same font as what's on the front of the Arcadia. So that is what we are requesting.
Can you want, before all the public hearing, you wanna take us through why this requires?
I will. Yes, sir. Thank you. As Ms. Tilly mentioned, this is a kind of a unique sign. It's not, the sign code doesn't speak to this type of sign anymore because it's just not a typical canopy sign that we would see. Most of the canopy sign sections of the, of the sign code really are more in reference to your fuel canopy, car wash canopies and that style building. This type of canopy sign on, on the roof of the canopy is limited to primary identification only. And obviously, this is the box office, which is the city property. The city's actually the applicant for this in partnership with Arcadia Live. This is the city property. It is a separate premise from Arcadia Live. But obviously, that's their box office and they need that notification of what's there and what's going on. Since the Arcadia has their own primary ID, they're requesting that this be allowed to advertise events and projects that are going on at Arcadia. So if, without the variance, the only thing allowed on this would just be Arcadia Live box office. But they wanna be able to actually show what's, what events are coming with the changeable letters and the marquee.
So the variance is not for the construction size or location of the sign? The variance is for what goes on the sign?
That is correct. Yeah, it means, it complies with all of the requirements of the sign code except the advertising what events are coming and not just having the primary name.
And the letters that are going on the sign are non-lighted?
That's correct.
The sign is backlit or?
Yes.
Yeah, and so it'll be, it's, it's lit from within. But the letters are all interchangeable. It's not...
Manual interchangeable letters, not a digital sign. It'll be backlit.
Okay, well, since this requires a public hearing, we'll open the public hearing at 4:06 on the variance for the sign. I don't, yeah, I do have someone that's signed up to speak. Dr. Rector?
Thank you, Honorable Commissioners. We appreciate the opportunity to address this. We have no problem with the Arcadia. They are a great neighbor. William Rector, 705 Water Street, and we received the notice because we have properties at 705, 707, 709, 711, and 713 Water, all within 200 feet of the proposed sign. If we could go back to the other, that image, perfect. We have no problems with the sign. We have no problems with the variance of it. There is one problem, though, that is arising here. Not shown in this image is a mature oak tree that is right in the center of where 1926 is going to be. We feel like that trees in downtown Kerrville soften the appearance of it, make it look more like a living area and a live area. And we would like to know how that the city is going to interface this sign with the tree that is right in the center of it. We are concerned about the health of that tree and how that's going to be part of downtown. This is a mature oak tree, probably 30 years old at this point.
Can you answer that question, ma'am?
So this sign is in a V shape?
That would be the sit, the, the street tree. So that's part of the city, city right-of-way. At this time, we don't have any plans, one way or the other, has, has not been part of that conversation. Obviously, going through this process would be the first step. So, I don't, I don't have a firm answer for that.
You know, I, I...
I, I mean, I would, I, I, you know, granting the variance for the sign is one thing. But, I mean, I would, I would think that the Arcadia Live would have an opinion about, are they gonna request that the tree be removed or not? I mean, I think that's, to me, it's an important part of whether I would vote for granting the variance.
So, being as part of the right-of-way, I don't know that it's necessarily pertinent to the variance. The variance is based on the evaluation criteria you have before you, specific to the sign code. So whether the tree stays or goes is not relevant to the signage.
Drew, is this, is this in the same location where the marquee was previously?
No, the previous marquee was on the Arcadia with the 1960s renovation. This is obviously the building next door to that. When the Arcadia Live redid the facade of that, going to the previous historic architectural front, that 1960s marquee did come down.
Those of you who are of my age group will remember when Lady Bird Johnson enacted the Highway Beautification Act. And what resulted from that act was that people came in and cut down the trees along the highways so that people could see the billboard that had been built on private property off the freeway. So, this is, is a concern as to how is this sign going to be impacted by the tree or how is this tree going to be impacted by the, by the sign? And I think there are plans for the sidewalks in downtown Kerrville. But I don't believe anyone has seen those plans at this point to know how that this is going to, how this sign is going to impact that tree.
Does, does...
Mike, if I could interject?
Yes, sir.
So, what's before y'all today is the request from them to allow alternate lettering on the sign. Should the Arcadia want to put up that sign and just say, "Arcadia Box Office," that's by right. What the variance request to y'all is, is that they be allowed to use alternate lettering on the sign. We'll be cognizant of all the things that we can when it comes to construction and how that's gonna impact downtown. But were they to wanna put up a sign right now that just said, "Arcadia Box Office," that's allowed by right.
That I understand. My question is, whose decision is it? A question. Will the sign, will the tree affect people? Because the sign is not there right now, correct? They wanna put the sign there. Will the tree that is there affect the ability for people to see the sign? Would no matter whether it just says, "Arcadia" or whatever?
It depends on where you are. I mean, it depends on where you're standing.
If you're standing directly from the street, face on, it would. But because it's in a V shape when you're driving...
If you're driving either way, it would not?
It will not, and it won't affect it.
And the decision of whether or not the tree remains is the city's? Okay.
It's part of the right-of-way management and public works.
Help you at all, Bill?
As I, as I mentioned, we have no problems with the sign itself. Our question is, what is this going, what impact is this going to have on downtown Kerrville's appearance?
As specific to the one tree?
That's correct. That's correct.
Ms. Rector, would you like to speak? You're on here.
Well, I would just bless and reiterate what Bill has just said. I was, happen to be a Kerrville native, born here. And I'm very cognizant of the beautiful hill country that we have. And one of the things that is a treasure is a nice tree that's not a cedar.
I think we would all agree with you on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, I also have another speaker here, Nikki Keynes.
I'm sorry, I apologize. I meant to put 3, the, on there.
Okay, you're good. Yes, ma'am. Any other speakers on this? If not, we're gonna close the public hearing at 4:12. I mean, I, I think the sign's great. I, I really have no issues with the sign at all. And I think if you're driving back and forth, it will be able to see what's going. Again, my concern would be, I hope that there's no future request to remove the tree.
Mike, I would, I would say that, you know, in the same way that that, that tree or that, that sign would be a few feet off of the building, right? We would, we would limb that tree up to stay off of the actual building itself. And so, we'll be mindful of the ways that we go out and manicure those, like we do everywhere.
Sure, and I would expect that.
I couldn't tell you exactly what's gonna happen right now with that. But, you know, there's not a single one of us here who's like, hey, let's, let's, we wanna take that one down, so...
And I, I trust that. I think that's the city's...
And it's not too far, it's not too much farther over what looks like the, the current canopy, right? And so it pushes out a little bit. So it may just be that as that tree is limbed, right, during regular pruning, that it's taken a little higher in that, in that vein, but not removed by any means.
Any comments, anybody? I, I think the sign's great. I mean, I'm...
I'm happy to go through the criteria in more detail. You've got the, that before you as far as recommendation and staff recommends the variance for approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. We have a second?
We have a second?
Motion and second, all in favor? We wish you guys great luck with the sign. You bet. So we're gonna move on to 3B. A resolution to allow a conditional use permit, 1602 Quinlan Creek. You wanna start us with this, Drew?
And if I may, I'll make a reminder for the commission and the public. City Council does have a zoning code amendment that Planning Commission looked at last month. That'll go towards City Council later this month. However, these applications must be considered under the current ordinance, not the future proposals. So, just a reminder for everybody.
What's the zoning on this one, Drew?
This one is zoned R1. This is at conditional use permit for Lot 4A, Block 1, Fair Oaks. It's 1602 Quinlan Creek. It is zoned R1. The commission is certainly familiar. A conditional use permit does not change the zoning, so there is no impact on the future land use plan. It is on a residential street. There's no traffic impact anticipated. This is a one-bedroom, let me get to the site plan real quick. One-bedroom guest house. So there's only two parking spaces required. You can see that secondary driveway on the south side of the property that has that parking. And our conditions have been the same conditional use permit for short-term rental conditions that we've had. The applicant is here. If you have any questions or be pleased to answer your questions before or after public hearing.
The applicant, would the applicant like to speak before we start?
Do you have any questions?
We do have questions, ma'am. And we can ask them during the public hearing or not. My question is, is are we talking about just a little guest house that you want to use as a short-term rental? Or are we talking about the whole property?
Currently, that guest house has been a short-term rental for two years. This was before you guys required permits for these. It's been under the auspices of Airbnb. It has been pretty much booked solid for two years. So I haven't had to launch it on to any other kind of format like VRBO. None of my neighbors are here. So they were all sent out the, the, in fact, some of my neighbors have actually used it for their incoming family when they've had an overflow. It's a private guest house. It's separate from the main house. It has its own driveway. It is just a studio, so it's not, it's not a, a party palace. It doesn't have, you know, multiple, multiple bedrooms or swimming pools or any of that stuff. It's just a single guest house.
And the whole property, the existing house and the guest house are all under that 1602 address?
Yes, I believe so. Yeah, the, the house has a guest house, and then there's the main house. And underneath the main house, there's also a whole separate apartment down there, which I haven't listed on any rental format because I have three dogs. And you'd have to get through those three dogs to get to that one. But the guest house is, is different, is a little different than that.
I mean, that, again, my question is, you're operating it already as, as a, as a short-term rental. We're, we're asked to approve the conditional use permit for the short-term rental or just the guest house? Are you...
Well, according to this, you have the whole, the whole address.
We do, but we have the ability to make amendments to this, and that's why I'm asking, are you requesting to use 1602, the main house and the guest house for short-term rental purposes or just the, the one you're operating with now?
I am not requesting the rest of the house to be used. But can I just play devil's advocate here for a minute?
Sure.
So I've, I'm, I'm a big Airbnb, VRBO advocate. My husband and I have used them, we haven't stayed in a hotel in 10 years. We love to go places where we can take our whole family and we all live together in the same place, that, that kind of situation. So, for me, and the whole premise of the short-term rental, the Airbnb that was started, was a college kid who was renting out an air mattress in his apartment to make a few bucks. So, I was at the last planning and zoning meeting and listening to the resolution that's gonna go before City Council. I just think there needs to be a little bit more thought into what a short-term rental is because it's been put into a box of a house or a guest house or a garage apartment. And that's not necessarily the case. Because there could be the newly-minted single mom who's gotta rent out her ex's man cave to pay the mortgage, you know? Or, or an enterprising college student who's gotta rent out a spare room in the house he's just bought. So it's not, it's not, doesn't all fit into the box that I'm hearing out there. So when you're asking me, "Is it just my guest house?" Yes, currently, that's, you know, I live in my house, so no, I have no plans to rent out my kid's bedroom, even though they're gone. But right now, it is the guest house. But if I'm a freshly-minted widow, would I like to rent out that bottom apartment? Yes, I would. I'd like that opportunity. Just food for thought.
Thank you, ma'am. So we have, do have some speakers. We're gonna open up the public hearing on this at 4:20, and we'll start with Nikki.
Yes, hi. My name is Nikki Keynes, and I am with the Kerrville chapter of the Texas Neighborhood Coalition. And first, we'd really like to thank P and Z for getting a proposed ordinance over to the City Council. It's something that is near and dear to our hearts because our neighborhoods are near and dear to our hearts. I applaud this current owner for owning up to the fact that she's already been using it for two years. That would be considered a pirate party, and you're not getting your hotel tax on that. But that said, currently, we have at least one-third of all of the STRs, the ones that are actually permitted, that are not even owned by anyone living here in Kerrville. We have some that are in DC, Kentucky, and all around Texas. So when, when it's considered an investment, to me, that investment is not in Kerrville. It's in their individual, to say a little crudely, their pockets. They're making money for themselves, and whether it's to put up their neighbors or put their kids through college, it is still what we consider an invasion into a neighborhood that strictly just doesn't want them there. So I thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Can I add something here? Am I allowed to?
I have one more speaker, then, then you certainly can speak, ma'am. Mary Ann Myers?
First, I would like to know, I'm curious, are there any other properties that are short-term rentals on Quinlan Creek Drive?
Do you have the map, Drew? You put that up? Because I don't know that I've seen any. No, ma'am, I don't see any.
So there's one, it's not on Quinlan Creek Drive, but it's, I can't remember the name of that street.
Malibu Drive.
In the neighborhood?
Yeah, there's one here, and the proposed one is here.
Okay. See it, ma'am?
An address on that?
I don't have the address. No, I don't.
Is it, is it on Malibu Drive North?
That was my question, is it Malibu? You don't know?
It looks like it is, ma'am.
Looks like it is.
It says Malibu.
Okay, thank you. I would like to say that I would be adamantly opposed to the entire house being rented on a short-term basis because it could turn into, you know, big parties, that sort of thing, really noisy. It could have a band on the deck, you know? I know BK and Terry have not done any of that, and it's been quiet. But I would be afraid that somebody in the future might launch into that kind of, you know, rent it for a week for a wedding party, all that sort of thing. And I'm in the house next door, so I don't think I'd like that at all. So, just wanted to say that.
Thank you, ma'am. Terry?
Okay, just a, a couple of points. You called me a pirate property. I wanna let you know that your city is hard at work because as soon as I launched an Airbnb, I got a letter from the city and I've been paying taxes since day one. So, it's not a pirate property. I have been paying my taxes, the hotel taxes. They take 15% right off the top. So it's, it's good money for the city, just like hotel tax would be. And as to Mary Ann, I appreciate Mary Ann. She's got a guest house, too. And, you know, it's on the other side of her property. So I do understand her reservation about the whole property. Right now, I just, I'm just trying to do right and get the permit because it wasn't something I was supposed to do way back when I started this, but it is now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all I have, signed up to speak.
May I speak again?
Yes, ma'am.
Just to clarify, my guest house, I built that for my parents when they were elderly. My father was suffering from dementia, and he passed away, but my mom stayed there for five years. And then, only family has stayed in that casita. We call it the casita, and it's family-only. The only people that have been there have been my family. Just to clarify.
Thank you. Yeah, we're gonna close this public hearing at 4:24. Comments, guys, questions?
Well, I kinda agree with one of the speakers that you don't know what the future's gonna bring. And I, I would, I would propose, as the condition goes on the CUP, that it just applies to the guest house.
I mean, I, I tend to agree, but my question, my question for either Drew or Mike would be if we... I'm assuming we can, we can propose whatever.
That's correct.
It'll have to go to City Council for approval or denial.
That's correct. So it'll go to City Council as, as requested with the recommendation of P and Z for that extra condition.
So if we were to propose that this be approved as a CUP for the guest house, and then in two or three years, she decided that she wanted to rent out her basement or she wanted to rent out, you, she would be able to come back to amend that and ask for additional? How would that work?
Under the current ordinance, yes. Under the future ordinance, I'm not sure. I'd have to look.
Is it tomorrow?
Right.
So off the top of my head, I don't think you can amend a conditional use permit that is no longer allowed. So future, I don't believe that would be allowed.
That was my question. I never thought about that. But if the new ordinance is passed, it's not, it's not, it's not in an allowed zoning, so it would not be able to be amended. You would still, you would still be able to use the guest house because it would have been approved. But if you wanted to come back and say, "I wanna use my basement," or...
No, ma'am.
Any other, any other questions or comments or anything? I would entertain a motion on this request for a conditional use permit on 1602 Quinlan Creek Drive.
Well, I'll make a motion that it's a conditional on just the guest house property.
So we have a motion that we approve this conditional use permit for the guest house portion only and excluding the rest of the house. Another motion?
Well, can we, can we do it where it's the whole thing, and then if not, just the guest house?
We can propose, we have a proposal now, so we'll deal with what we have. And then if this passes, then we're done. If it doesn't pass, we can go back. You can entertain another motion on the whole property. So I have a motion to approve the conditional use permit for the guest house portion of the property only, and I have a second. So all in favor of that motion, raise your hand. Okay, that passes. So we're gonna move on to 3C.
3C is a resolution to allow a conditional use permit for a short-term rental on 1.37, oh, excuse me, 1.373 acres of the Martinez survey, number 124, abstract 247, known as 2101 Arcadia Loop. That'll turn it over to the applicant.
Good afternoon, guys. My name is Tim Buck. I'm on, here on behalf of Justin Farrell, who's in Kazakhstan on a work assignment. Mr. Farrell, the applicant, is from Harper. He's local. This property is his family's home, his wife and his, his son. It's going to be their full-time home. They're only planning to rent this out when they're in town. They have another property. They wanna be in town when they're renting, so they keep an eye on it, take care of repairs. He's on extensive work on the property, so he's plugged into the contractors and stuff who know the building. And that's his intention, is really only rent it when he's here. So, he's got adequate parking. It's a, it's a large space. There's four bedrooms. If you have any specific questions, I can try to answer them. Otherwise, we just urge that the proposal be approved.
Do I have any questions before we open the public hearing? Can you put the map up, Drew, before we go to the public hearing so I can see how many we have in the neighborhood?
There's a couple.
It is a mixed-use neighborhood. In fact, there's a radiator shop across the street, and there is a couple of FDRs there already.
Yeah, there's quite a few.
This property's right here.
So you have three on the block?
I think there's six. This will be the seventh. So this is the request today, and then these six there.
All right, I'm going to open the public hearing at 4:30, and I do have some speakers on this. I really can't read this. 1709 Foothills Drive, who lives there?
That's me.
Okay.
I blame her for the writing.
What's your name, sir?
I had to finish. Jack Hampton.
Okay, Jack.
Yeah, the... I thought there was going to be somebody else here, and they didn't show up. So I'm kind of taking the ball here, maybe not really prepared. But one of the things is that there's even more than what we had thought, more STRs than what we had originally thought from 1796 down to 2031. This will be five in the short area. Basically, if you look, it's going to be almost every other house. And the people I thought were going to be here have had some complaints about noise and especially the parking and the congestion in the area because of the small street, or narrow street, I should say. Anyway, they were 100% in opposition to this approval. And they weren't aware of the other one that was going to be on, that's coming up. So that'll even make it worse, but they're all bunched up right together.
All right.
So that's the main complaint.
Thank you, sir.
Those lots are big, so the 200 feet just goes one house. So if you do every other house, well, then that's what you have, every other house. So you can have a family reunion in three or four houses in a row and have the whole street blocked.
Thank you, sir. All right. Is this Buck?
That's me.
Oh, you spoke...
I just spoke, yeah.
Okay. So that is all the speakers I have. Were there any letters received back, Drew, on this?
I don't believe so.
Letters in the packet that I didn't see?
No.
Well, I'm going to close the public hearing at 4:33 and open for discussion amongst commissioners. Kevin, anything?
I mean, you know, with the parking requirements and everything else, are there a lot on that street? There are. But I don't really see a reason for us to deny it.
Blom, anything?
Yeah, there are a lot there, but I think they're there because the river's there. And it's a great place to have a B&amp;B, in my opinion. So I like it.
No comment? Anything?
I agree. I mean, what's been said, it's a great location. He's going to be living there and then renting it out while he's in town.
What's the zoning on this one, Drew?
It's R2.
Well, you know, it's taken all by itself. It's a great location. The river is there. It's got plenty of parking. It's got everything. My biggest concern is, is this is just becoming a street full of short-term rentals. I just think it's a mistake. I think it's a mistake to continue one street to have six, seven, or eight short-term rentals on the block. Because there are probably some people that live there, and it's probably a problem for them. But no one complained, no one sent any letters in against it. So I guess no one seems to be too unhappy about it. So I guess at that point, we'll entertain a motion on this request for the short-term rental.
I'll move to approve as presented.
Okay, we have a motion to approve as presented. We have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay, this motion is approved. We'll move on to 3D. A resolution to allow conditional use permit at 1701 Deer Trail.
Yes, sir. This property is zoned R1. Here's the site plan. They do have, the driveway actually would only hold two cars currently, but they do have room adjacent to the house or in front to expand that.
How many bedrooms is it, Drew?
Three-bedroom, so it does require four spaces. But they do have opportunity for those extra parking spaces, and I spoke with the applicant previously.
Is the applicant here?
Yes, they are.
Yeah, we're asking for an STR permit on Deer Trail. My name's David Pope. This is my wife, Nikki Parks. We've been managing and owning VRBOs for 10 years now. We've never had an issue. We stick to the smaller houses, such as this one. We only allow one to four people. While this is a three-bedroom house, we're going to lock one of the bedrooms up and use it for storage. And we kind of like the driveway, and that can only accommodate two cars because we want to only allow in four people. Right now, we rent not just short-term, but we also go up to 90 days. Some of the houses that we've had in the past, we get a lot of repeat business. So the neighbors actually have gotten to know some of the people who rent because they're saying people like to come back year over year. Right immediately, I think we're going to improve the appearance because it has no yard. It's all dirt. We've already arranged for it to be sodded and have a sprinkler system put in. So, and we don't put any signs in the yard that it's a VRBO or anything like that.
You guys are local? Do you live here?
Right now, we're in Fredericksburg.
Okay.
But we are having a house built in Camp Verde, which is one reason we want to get a rental here. So it's only 10 miles away.
Did I understand you're going to have additional parking, paving for two more vehicles?
No, it only accommodates two, and we want to keep it that way.
Well...
Well, you can't do that with a two-bedroom. You have to have three.
We have room. We've talked about it. We talked about this weekend.
There is room on the side of the, right side of the driveway.
To put a concrete pad.
To put a concrete pad.
Okay, because I'm assuming, and correct me if I'm wrong, in order to get, we can approve this, and then it goes to City Council, but you're going, before you would get a permit to operate, you would have to provide three off-street parking spaces on the property. No, two-bedroom. He says he's, one of the bedrooms, you said you're...
We're going to lock up.
Okay. So we can...
That would only require three at that point.
So...
Currently, it's rock.
Yes, sir. So how, do we deal with... I mean, I guess the assumption is, if he provides the three parking spaces, he's only allowed to have a two-bedroom short-term rental.
That's correct.
If he decides in the future to open the other bedroom up, he would have to provide additional parking space or would not be allowed. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And we're fine with that.
Yeah.
We've done the same thing with other houses because we just don't want large groups.
Sure, I understand.
Mainly families.
Okay, we're going to open the public hearing up at 4:39. And I do have two people signed up to speak on this. Tommy? Brock? Yes, sir, Tommy.
Well, I'm here to oppose it. I've lived there for 22 years. I've had my kids there. They've grown now. My children, I went to the elementaries and all the schools there. It's a family neighborhood, and I've watched a lot of families grow up there. And I feel like that's what it is. It's a family residence, and it's not for someone coming in there. And it was just have different people coming in there all the time. So I just oppose it.
Thank you, sir. Sharon Davis?
I lived at 1611 Deer Trail, which is right next door to them. And they were talking about being able to widen the driveway or whatever, you know, for additional cars. There's not room. I mean, you couldn't, you could barely get a car to drive in between their house and my house as far as property-wise. And my concern, I guess, is the people that are going to come in, are they going to be like, for a week overnight? You know, families or parties, like bachelorette parties or whatever. I live alone. I'm a widow. And, you know, the thought of people coming in and out and stuff kind of bothers me, so... But I'm going to let Kim talk.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Kim?
Hey, I'm Kim McKnight with Realty Executives, and I'm representing Sharon in the sale of her home. We feel like the short-term rental will have a direct impact on her ability to sell. I do feel like, you know, when you go to a hotel, you know that there's a chance that somebody next door is going to be keeping you up all night. You expect that. You don't expect that when you go into your home every day. And so I just feel like, you know, there's no background checks being done, so a family trying to buy her home, they're not going to want people coming in and out, strangers that they don't know. And so we do feel like this would be a detriment to her ability to sell.
Thank you, ma'am.
Can I respond?
Ma'am, sure.
We, you know, I know that, you know, there are some background checks done by Airbnb and VRBO. And like I said, we've been doing this for 10 years, and we've had thousands of guests from all over the world. And we don't, we don't, we have an age limit. They can't, they have to be over the age of 25.
Speak up, ma'am.
Could you speak up just a little bit?
Oh, I'm sorry. They have to be over the age of 25. And rarely do we get them over in that age group. Most everybody who comes into our homes have been families or couples or singles. We get a lot of people who travel, like traveling nurses, doctors, professionals, engineers, who come in and they're there for three to six months at a time. We've really kind of focused on that's part of our market because I'm in the healthcare field and I know how hard it is to find places to stay. And so that's part of our market, and the STR, minimum of three days, up to 90 days. And some people stay longer. We've had people right now who are looking at our house that they want to...
They want it for three months because they're remodeling their home in Kerrville.
So we get a lot of requests for a lot of different things. So we don't just limit it to a three to five day. And we've never, we've never had a neighbor complain in 10 years, and 10 houses over those 10 years. It's just been, it's been a lot of fun. And when we have sold our homes, some of our neighbors have come up and they've missed, they said, "Oh, sad to see you guys go to sell this home because now we're going to miss all that, all these different people that they've met over the years." And so we just haven't, honestly, in 10 years, I've never, I've never had to keep anybody's deposit for damage or anything. So I just, it's just been a really good experience for me because I was scared for Squintin, too, when I started this whole business because, you know, you put a lot of money into a home. And we furnish it just like we would live there. And so it's not sparsely furnished, it's fully furnished, and we provide all the amenities. And so, you know, at first, you know, it's like, you're risking. But over 10 years and thousands of guests, we just haven't had any issues. We've never had the police call or, I mean, I can't even imagine. I hear horror stories, but we've just never experienced that. We really try and pick and choose. We read, you know, the requests. We just, you know, if we think it's not a good fit, we'll decline them. So I think it really comes up to how we manage our VRBOs and our properties and who we want to have in our home to assure that we don't get somebody in there who's going to cause any issues with our home, with our property, or anybody around the home in the neighborhood.
Thank you, ma'am. I do have someone else signed up to speak. Go ahead. Yes, ma'am?
Well, I was just going to say, you've been very fortunate, but that's not always the case with the VRBOs. And it's still creating a transient feel to the neighborhood. You all have remodeled incredibly well. But I think, if I'm remembering right, you have an entertainment space outside, which is out back, like a porch set up out there. And so it's, you know...
It's a pretty small porch.
I just feel like it's going to impact the neighborhood negatively.
Yeah, it's pretty small. Really, that porch was put in more because there's a little house where it houses the laundry room. So it's an access more than anything it is than, it's not for big parties. We don't allow events, never have, at any of our homes over the years.
And limiting it to four people, that's the reason we do that.
Thank you, ma'am. David Pope?
I'm right here.
Okay, so you guys were on here. Okay. All right, so if I have no more speakers? Yes, ma'am? Sure?
Amy Wittenbach. I am a neighbor up on the hill. We were here to oppose another short-term rental that is close to the schools. It has been withdrawn. But one of the points that we wanted to bring up, and I'd like to share it with everybody here, is that this house is in close proximity to one school, two schools on the other side of the hill. And as has been pointed out, there are no, very few regulations on the people that can rent into these areas. Our neighborhood was extremely concerned about people being able to, the transient people being able to come in and rent that don't have any background checks close to a school area. And I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention.
Thank you, ma'am. So we have no more speakers. I'm going to close the public hearing on this at 4:47. Open for discussion.
I have a question, Drew. If they're creating a third parking place, that's going to require a curb cut, right?
Not necessarily. We've seen several that just widen the driveway so that you can kind of go in somewhat of an angle. It's not uncommon.
So that's acceptable?
It is.
City-wise, okay.
Drew, do we have a map of STRs in the area?
Yes. I don't know if that's showing up on your screen. I can't see it up here. This one's located right about here.
Can you put the site plan back up, Drew? So the four little squares that you have right there represent four parking places?
Well, the, from the front of the house to the property line is only 25 feet. So that would only allow one car deep, two cars wide. Between the house and the side property line, I believe it's 10, 10-point-something feet. So there is room for parking between the existing driveway and the property line or between the house and that side property line still. Or they could widen it over to the front yard.
Yeah, I'll attest to that. It looks short. I put my vehicle on there, my 15-foot, 9-inch vehicle on it, and it filled it up.
Yeah. And that's pretty standard because the front setback requirement was 25 feet, so it's fairly typical. Any other questions?
Any other questions, guys?
Can I ask a question? So they may limit who they rent to...
The public hearing is closed.
Yeah, I'm sorry, ma'am, the public hearing is closed, but I can ask the question. When you guys, this is just for informational purposes. This is not required to have a short-term rental. Can you explain to us how you, how you kind of screen the people that you rent to? And this might answer her question.
So we usually get inquiries in, and we do Furnish Finders.
Where do you come from?
Furnish Finders is a great one for professionals and traveling nurses. Been doing that for years. Furnish Finders, and I talk to everybody personally. And then the other inquiries come in from Airbnb, and they're not allowed to book automatically. Just, that's my preference, our preference, not to book Airbnb automatically. They seem to have a few more issues than what VRBO seems to have. VRBO, people probably pay a little bit more for the rental. But I talk to everybody personally, you know. We email back and forth, and we can't get an initial. So if I decide I'm going to book them, we'll go ahead and we'll book them, and then we'll get a phone number, and then we can call them. And so we talk to everybody, so every person coming in. So it's really... So it's really kind of a, a meet and greet, although it may not be in person. And some of the, you know, it's just something that has worked well for us.
Anything, any other comments, guys? Any questions or anything? I'll entertain a motion on three D to allow a short-term rental at seventeen oh-one Deer Trail.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. I have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor? All opposed? The motion fails for lack of.
Lack of majority.
And just so you understand, this, you still can, you can appeal this to city council.
Okay, like the October eleventh.
I don't know what meeting it would be, Drew.
That's right.
October?
That's correct.
Yeah, you can appeal.
So I do have a question because we have people who are, it's not considered a short-term rental if you do twenty-eight days or more.
Well, if you, if it's, you're renting for over twenty-eight days, you don't need a conditional use permit.
But we, we are, we are planning on doing that because we have, you know, somebody who's.
You don't need a conditional. My understanding is.
Correct. Thirty, thirty days or more.
You think over twenty-eight days, you can rent it.
Right.
It's just the short-term rental side, you're, you're.
Our order says thirty days.
Three days, okay, thirty days.
Okay, and that's fine because everybody that has contacted us has been wanting for thirty, well, ninety days. Because one's building and another one is, um, remodeling a home on Lisa Street.
So if you keep an eye on the agenda for city council, you'll see.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate it.
All right, we're gonna go to three E, resolution for a short-term rental at fourteen twenty-five Lois Street.
This one is zoned R one and just three-bedroom house, so four parking spaces would be required. And I'll let the applicant, site plan's kind of hard to see.
You put the map up, Drew?
That's, this one's right here on the edge of this neighborhood, on Lois Street. The applicant is here if you have any questions.
Sure. The applicant wish to speak? God, I've never seen this guy before.
Matt Sletton, three twenty-four Clay Street, here to represent, uh, uh, Mr. Iseman as the owner of the property. Uh, we would be the, uh, the local management company for this property. Um, of course, again, we've been here over twenty-plus years, um, you know, all of that you've, that you've heard before. Uh, this is a, a family property of the Isemans. It was his late mother's house. Um, he still has lots of relatives in the area. Um, and so he would like to have the opportunity to be able to come back and visit, but still have the, uh, the property uh, serve as a, as a potential income source as well, naturally. Um, one of the key attributes on this property in terms of a short-term rental is that it really only has one neighbor, one adjoining property, um, off to, uh, as you're facing the house off to the right. Uh, to the left of the house is a city, I believe it's a well lot, but it's property owned by the city. Um, of course, Lois Street is a, is a collector road. So there really shouldn't be any traffic impact and so forth. Um, and even directly behind it, uh, is a deep yard with the, with the house that's set more towards the corner of Cynthia Drive, that is. So even its backyard neighbor really doesn't exist at all. Um, this is a, it is a, it is a three-bedroom home. Um, the guests would have access to both sides of the garage as well as the driveway, uh, to easily allow for por- for parking spaces. And, uh, it would be, uh, uh, probably a six-person manc- occupancy, though there's a chance that it could go to eight, um, if they decide to do a sleeper sofa, but probably a six-person occupancy.
All right, I do not have anyone. I'm gonna open the public hearing, but I do not have anyone signed up to speak on this. We're holding the public hearing at four fifty-four. I don't have anybody signed up. I guess we'll close the public hearing at four fifty-five. Comments or anything? I mean, it's, that's quite, quite a bit of space around it, not much around it.
I'll, I'll make one comment, the, uh, is a comment about just one neighbor. Uh, a letter was received from two oh-one Manor, which is directly across the street. So there is another neighbor there.
Any, any, any questions for the applicant guys? Is there any comments or anything? What's the zoning on this one, Drew?
Uh, R one.
Do you have a map showing all the other ones? I didn't see anything.
Add nothing.
Show, show, point out where it is, Drew?
And so it's located right here.
There's a two or three that are in the general area.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second?
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. This one passes. To resolution for a conditional use permit at twenty, oh, this one was pulled, the San Jacinto one was pulled, right?
Correct.
Can we make a comment on that, even though it's been withdrawn?
No, we don't have, we've removed it. It's been withdrawn from the agenda.
Yeah, it's not, it's actually not on the agenda, so it really is, yeah, if you watch, um, I don't know if it's gonna come back on agenda or not, but it will be posted.
So at, at the end of this, can we make a comment? You all have suggestions or discussions or whatever?
We don't have a public comment period.
Yeah, we don't, we don't really have just a general, uh, what, what I would suggest you do, if you have something to write and send it to, send it to.
We have, I just wanna make sure that it's notated publicly, um, not just privately, but I call it, I know it's public being, it's coming to your office, but I still would like for it to be known, uh, publicly. I think that we have the right to do that.
The planning commission does not have a public, a citizens' comment period, no.
We, we, you, you can.
Public hearings only for each case on the agenda.
Since it's not gonna, since it's theoretically, it's not coming up, it's not gonna go, it's not coming here, it's not going to city council. You know, like, city council has, has a section where you can speak on anything, we do not. But again, did, did you receive a letter from them, Drew?
Yeah, I received several letters from the neighbors.
It's in our package, right?
Well, it's not in your packet because it's not on the agenda today.
Okay.
It's been withdrawn.
And that's kind of why I'm wanting you guys to see that because it's not.
Sir, the, the case is not on the agenda. It's not appropriate to talk about it. I'm sorry.
That's, that's our rules. I mean, that's what we have to.
Just following state law.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I would, I would say you could send letters to council, I guess. I, I don't know. Uh, you know, but it's just not, it's not on this agenda, so we can't.
So we can't send a letter to the city council? Is that?
We can.
I'm asking questions here.
Yes, sir. Yes.
I can speak to the outside, sir, but I have to continue the meeting.
Okay, three G is a resolution to allow a conditional use permit on lot twenty-seven, block thirty-three, one thirty, loop thirteen. And with that, I'll turn it over to the applicant.
It's been a long time since I've had to speak in front of people. I think high school. Um, I'm Margaret. My husband and I bought that home. Originally, we had planned on using it for our children when they went to college, but like all children, they decided to do something else. So, uh, right now, we would like to use it for a, a short-term rental while, uh, we finish our business in San Antonio and then we will be moving up and, um, residing here in Kerrville. We have land in Ingram that we'd also like to, um, build on and grow into this community. Jeff and I are from small communities, two thousand people, so we understand everybody's concern with people coming in and out. Uh, we have a three-bedroom home. We have four parking spots in front of the house. We will let them use the garage, the carport, and then the two other areas. We also plan on having a station there for renters who want to charge their, um, electric cars. We will have a camera on the front of the house so that we can see the comings and goings, uh, make sure that it's just the amount of people that have rented the property. I have also, um, looked into investing a monitor for the back of the house that will monitor noise. We're not planning on renting it to parties. We want it to be for families. Um, and this way, if the noise gets over at a certain level, we will be notified and we can handle it immediately. Um, the neighbors to the left of us is an Airbnb and I, we've talked all the time and she's enlarged her parking area just yesterday. So between our two homes, there's no room for street parking, so we should have enough there. We have, uh, been updating it, bringing it up to code. We've used all local Kerrville people, our electricians, our painters. Everybody has been Kerrville oriented. Now I'm looking for somebody in the area that makes soaps and stuff like that, so we can have just this community in our home. We have retrod it. My husband has made sedan glass for almost every window and doors. The inside is, uh, mid-century modern looking. We've gone back to the metal cabinets. Um, our bathrooms are all, um, the old porcelain fixtures and stuff like that. So we are looking for people that are above thirty to rent our properties. We will not allow people under the age of twenty-five in our homes, even small, um, parties. We've been asked like, will we allow bachelorette parties and that? No, because I'm a woman, I know what goes on at those bachelorette parties. So, um, I hope I've answered any questions or concerns that you have.
I understand why you want to move and live there. All right, I do have one speaker. I'll open up the public hearing at five o'clock on, on, uh, this one. And I have a speaker, Teresa Yeldon?
Yes, um, I'm Teresa Golden.
Golden, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Golden, I own one twenty-one, loop thirteen. Thirty-three years ago, I lived in the house next door, one twenty-eight, loop thirteen. And, um, when I had an opportunity to come back and bought this house, I pretty well jumped on it because it's a unique neighborhood. And we all know each other. I knew each other. We knew each other thirty-three years ago and we know each other now. And we care about each other and we help each other. And Brenda, um, Harshaw, who lives behind me and directly across the street from the proposed Airbnb, is completely opposed to it. Um, she's in the hospital. She couldn't make it today. It's a unique neighborhood because it's so quiet and unknown. Not many people know it's there. And it's right on the river and we see the fireworks from our backyards and it's just a very close-knit, quiet neighborhood. We have another Airbnb already that, I guess, has been there for a while. And we have a sober house, sober living house. They're all in a row, those three. Hers is the third one. And, um, it just seems like, you know, it's taking over. The nature center uses our streets for parking when they have events. And so there's no way to get through our street. It's a tiny street, it's twenty feet wide in front of this proposed rental. And if we have company, if Stephen has company next door, ran a camp back out of the driveway, my tenant. And Brenda can't drive, back out of her driveway if anybody's parked on the street at this proposed rental. It just blocks. And they have been blocking our street a lot for the last month with construction and noise and we're just opposed to it. None of us want it. Nobody that lives there. I have two other neighbors that owned that are here. And I don't think they signed up to speak.
Well, I have two more.
You do?
I was getting two more.
Okay, good, okay. Um, but, um, we don't have, nobody owns a motorcycle. If anybody rents with motorcycles and, you know, it's just terribly noisy. But it, it's, we have Eddie's Tree Service that had guard dogs for months that we could hear all night long. They don't have them anymore, but it's changed our neighborhood. All of that has changed our neighborhood. And we liked it the way it was.
Thank you, ma'am.
I appreciate that.
You bet. Uh, Steve?
Uh, yeah, I live across the street. Um, the traffic there, it's hard to get around. I mean, like, like everybody's saying, you got, got one car, two cars apart, nobody can get through. Somebody has to back on out. Uh, on our neighborhood, on my side of the street, there's five houses. On the other side, there's only one that faces this street. Earth's face is a different street. So there's only six houses on this whole street and three of them are multi-car, you know, uh, halfway house. When I left, it had four cars. The other one, we had them parked in six or seven in their, in their driveway. Uh, they got, they did put their parking in for four more. I've had trespassers, I have people come in my house, m- behind my house, go fishing and use my facilities, my swings, my, my raths. And I just rather stay there more of a single family residence is what I want to be.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Jennifer?
Yes, and I apologize for the way I look. I took a dog with a vet and came straight here. I, um, uh, Steve does not live across the street from the proposed property. He lives next door. He lives next door to it. I own the house on the other side of Steve. I am not the tenant of my house. I, I rent long-term. I have a, a nurse living there right now. I have in the past not been a good landlord in that I've rented to people who have parked willy-nilly all over the place. And I apologize to my, my, uh, fellow owners for that, but I learned my lesson. Uh, I only rent to people, uh, uh, my tenant knows that she can have, she has two spaces in our driveway and that's where she can park. If she needs to have excess parking, she needs to courteously uh, make an inquiry of the neighbors. Uh, by that I mean, uh, Brenda or Teresa or Steve. It is the tiniest little street. It is loop thirteen, it's a hidden gem, like they said. It's quiet, little, little tiny houses. That street cannot handle traffic. Our street's been torn up by the city for some kind of work they've done and they have yet to fix it still. It's just, it's, it's, uh, but it's quiet. We're fortunate to be the owners of the houses on the river. And that's, uh, I can understand why you might want to rent it to people if it's on the river. But uh, parking is a problem. I am, like Steve said, people backing out. I've driven on my street before, like, because I own the house. And I, I, I had to back out because somebody was coming the other way and there were too many cars. There's just not room for that many cars. So I do worry about you renting. I don't know, I, I saw in that picture, there was a tree, but there's not a tree there anymore.
No, the tree has been removed.
Okay, all right. Uh, and it seemed like there was more concrete in that picture than, you know, is, uh, is.
No, the concrete is the same. I'm sorry, can y'all hear me?
So you, it's fine. It's, so, but, but I do worry about the parking. Um.
I can understand that. I, I truly can because we have been there when, uh, there's multiple people parking. Uh, usually we find it's the halfway house because I, I don't, I thought the rules, um, were the same everywhere in Texas that you should be parking, going the way of the street. So if you, so people should be parking, um, and they, they park different ways. They park, you know, somebody's gonna be parking north when somebody's gonna be parking south. So it does get kind of confusing. We do have enough parking, though, for everybody that would be in our spot. Now, I know Steve. Now, I know Steve, he's a very nice gentleman. He has a big place to park. You know, he's got good four spots, but he's going to park on the street nine times out of 10. And when he has company there on the street, when he has plenty of parking for himself and, you know, whoever comes. As far as Brenda, I've known Brenda since we bought the house. We've talked about it. We sit on her porch. We've visited, talked about what we were doing. And she has been nothing but supportive. In fact, she has given me people's names and numbers to call when I needed electricians or builders or that sort of thing. I know she's sick. I went over and, and then when I saw somebody yesterday asked how she was and they were like, oh, she's great. So I'm really sad to hear that she's in the hospital. As far as the lady who spoke on the corner, we've been there for quite a while. And I know my husband and I both have gone house to house knocking every once in a while to introduce ourselves. We never get a response, you know? So we've just kind of figured that everybody is kind of cloistered in their homes. We have done a lot to this house to make it look nice. If you drive through this neighborhood, it is really, really charming because it is so small. But the houses are falling into disarray also, you know, they're. So I'm hoping that like if we, and, you know, add to our home and the curb appeal, other people will also follow along, you know, in their homes too. So it does become a pretty area. But yeah, that tree is gone. So all that parking is there, plus in the carport and the garage will be available. We're putting AstroTurf so that we don't have to rely on the city's water sources to water it. So the front yard will be AstroTurfed. And it will be, we've applied, are applying for the permit. Do you know what I mean by cemetery fence? The iron fencing that you, that's our plan to put it around the front of the house. And we have no problem in putting a fence between our property and Steve's if that would give him comfort. So people can't walk from our side over into his yard because I wouldn't like that either if, you know, it was my home. But I have no problems in doing that. And also letting our renters know that our property is the only property they're allowed on. You know, after, between Steve's and my house is a drainage ditch, you know? So that's a really easy thing to say. You can't go on the other side of that cement drainage ditch. So we can handle those issues. Steve and Brenda have all our phone numbers. So if they ever have, you know, a concern, it's just a phone call away.
Thank you, ma'am. That's the only speakers I have. Yes, ma'am?
I spoke to Brenda Harshaw yesterday. And she said she wasn't going to be able to come. That she wanted all of us to come up here and kick ass. Those are her words. She is not supportive. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing at 5:14. I have some questions because I went and took a look at this thing myself. And, I mean, you can't get up the street.
Right, it is an, it is an narrow street. Certainly wouldn't meet today's standards.
It's a one-way street. It's not narrow, it's one-way. You can't put, you can't have two cars going like this.
That's true. It's only as wide enough for one car. It's 20 feet, I measured it.
I guess the city doesn't, I mean, if you had a fire back there, you couldn't get back there. Couldn't get a fire, you couldn't get a, you know, first responders back there. Does the city not deal with that at all?
It's an existing development. We can't require the, take property from the road. So no.
Comments? You guys go take a look at this?
Yeah.
How many, how many of there are in this area?
Show us where it is, Drew.
Yeah. This one's right here. As I, as I mentioned, there is one next door. There's actually another one on Francisco Lemos, but it's zoned for down, zone mixed use. So it's by right. But that one's the one that fronts Francisco Lemos right there on the corner of the river and, or right at the edge of the bridge, excuse me.
Comments?
Well, given the unique situation we're looking at in this unique neighborhood, I'd make a motion to deny it.
Second, Ted.
Any other comments or questions? I mean, as lovely as this place is, I mean, I don't, compounding what's a major problem with another major problem seems counterproductive to what we're trying to do here. I'm assuming that's probably not part of our, our consideration, but.
Or does that take cars off the street? You know, if it's a short-term rental, they can't park on the street. If it's a long-term rental.
No, 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 they can. The short-term rentals, they can park just like anybody can. There's no requirement, they're required to have the off-street parking. They're not required to park off-street. We found that out. Just like anybody else, I mean, you can park on the street. And I mean, it clearly provides the parking. I mean, it's, I guess that being said, we have, we have a motion to deny. We have a second. All in favor of the motion to deny, raise your hand. All opposed? Opposed to denying it. And the only reason I'm opposed to denying is because it meets all the requirements.
Need a new motion?
Yes.
Make the motion to approve.
A second.
Have a motion to approve. We have a second. All in favor to approve the motion, raise your hand. All opposed? So the motion passes. So we are going to move to 3H. Resolution to allow conditional use permit on 309 Guadalupe Street.
This is Block H Lowry Edition. As you said, 309 Guadalupe. This is Zone R2. With that, I'll turn it over to the applicant.
My name is Larry Howard. I live at 503 Oakland Hills Lane. And I think I've submitted the required paperwork for an approval of my conditional use permit at 309 Guadalupe Street. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Can you put the map up, Drew?
Yes, sir.
I think we're right here.
I think it's the other right, I think, Drew.
You what?
I think it's the other one, isn't it?
Is it this one?
That one, yeah.
That's right, yeah. One on the left is the next case.
Is that where the streets changed names right there?
No, it's still Guadalupe.
Still Guadalupe.
Larry, this property goes back to the river?
Yes, it does. It touches the trail.
Well, I do have one speaker. So before we get any questions left, I'm going to hold the public hearing at 5:19. And I have Ann Ramirez to speak on this one.
Good afternoon. I'm speaking on behalf of the residents that are no longer there. Years ago, I remember visiting Kerrville. I was from a different town, but we would come to Kerrville and frequent that area on Guadalupe because there's area further up that's a picnic area that you can play, swings for the kids to play. And now, and this Guadalupe is just down the street from where I live. The same problem we had, I had, and my neighbors on Starkey Street. So right now, all the little houses that used to be resident-owned or owner-occupied are being dismantled, they're being renovated, which is good. I understand that. But all that Guadalupe now is turning into STRs from what I can see. And it's, it's sad to see because, I mean, I moved into the residence, into the area because of the residents, because of the people that I wanted to, to know and stuff. So just, just a little side note, I wanted to mention that I guess there's no residents on Guadalupe. Otherwise, they would be here to speak on behalf of their homes. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. So I have no one else signed up to speak. So we'll close the public hearing at 5:20. Put the map back up, would you please, Drew?
R2.
R2 zoning, is that what?
Yes, R2. Yeah, the south side of Guadalupe is R2. The north side is R1A.
So there are two right, almost right across the street on Guadalupe.
Yes, there's, there's this grandfathered one. This is a CUP. And then this one would be there.
Any questions or comments? I mean, it's a really, it's a really decent location. Backs up to the River Trail, close to the river, it's just a.
I'll make a motion to approve.
You have a motion to approve. We have a second.
Yeah.
Motion to approve, a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Want them to approve this one. I just think it's a good location. All opposed? So we're going to move on to 337. Larry? Are you 337?
Go ahead. Thanks. 337 Guadalupe Street is a short-term rental, conditional use permit.
Larry Howard, 503 Oakland Hills Lane. Same as before, I've filed the required paperwork for approval of a permit. Be happy to answer any questions.
So this is just right down the street, if I remember correctly. I drove and took a look at it today.
This is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven houses down the street, yes. It as well touches the River Trail, access directly to the trail and the river.
Have no one signed up to speak? Let me open the public hearing. And yes, ma'am, you can. I'm going to open the public hearing at 5:22. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Karen Sides. I live on Starkey Street, just right around the corner. This is, this is our neighborhood. I have watched Guadalupe Street go from a residential home with kids getting off the bus, watching them go, go home, people barbecuing out in their backyards. If you go down Guadalupe Street now, it is just, it's just vacant. There are no real people there. It's been totally decimated from what it used to be. And that's something I would like for you to keep in mind in approving these. It's not just issues of parking and noise. Those are, those are annoyances for sure. But we're taking away neighborhoods. I bet you, we don't even know where these people ended up who've been removed from those homes in order to put in spaces for tourists. The housing issue here is such a dire thing and we keep compounding it by taking family homes off the market. I would love to see all of these investors open it up for long-term rentals. That's what our town needs. If you love our town, do it, do it for our town. We need it desperately. The other thing I think sometimes we miss is when you take neighbors out of the neighborhood, you don't have that cohesiveness. You don't have the neighborly feel to, to a place. It doesn't feel like home anymore. And that's a big deal. It takes away from the enjoyment of your home. And that's something that I think we need to do for our residents. That's how we thrive as a community when we're feeling safe and healthy and happy in our neighborhoods. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to close the public hearing at 5:24. We, we're definitely suffering growing pains on these short-term rentals. This has been a constant issue we've dealt with for the last year. And I hope that what we proposed, what staff proposed, and what we approved is going to city council. When's it going, Drew?
September 13th.
September the 13th to remove all these short-term rental requests and give zoning classifications that allow for these short-term rentals. And if it's not allowed in your zoning classification, then there won't be any hearings on it because you won't be able to apply for a conditional use permit. And, you know, we're dealing with it, we're growing with it. I mean, people that are doing, are creating these things. It's a double-edged sword, what they're doing, what the owners are doing. They're improving the properties and they're bringing people in and out. By and large, I think the people that rent these things are really, you know, not having any issues. We've requested several times, many times, other complaints to the police department. We don't ever get any complaints. So I'm hoping this is the last time we have to deal with these conditional use permits. But we do deal with what we have today. And this is what we have. So that being said, I would entertain a motion on this for 337 Guadalupe Street.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Motion to approve in a second. All in favor? All right. This passes. Maybe that's the last time we have to listen to a conditional use permit for a short-term rental. We're going to move on to 3J.
3J is an ordinance to change the zoning from RE Residential Estate District to R2 Medium Density Residential District. 36.28 acres of land out of the Nathaniel Hoyt survey, number 145, abstract 178. Portion of 168 acre tract out of special warranty deed. Now, this is currently addressed to 2601 Medina Highway. And with that, I'll turn it over to the applicants.
Okay. Okay, yeah, it's original. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Right, and I've been looking at Kerrville for quite a while. I'm a developer from Bernie. Been in Bernie for 32 years. And heard about needing some housing, came across a piece of land. And in the past, our engineers have been here talking and our lawyers have been here talking. But I thought tonight, I'm going to come talk. We've, we've got a lot invested here now. And after our last city council meeting, it didn't go so well. River Hill people did a great job of turning out and voicing their concerns. And since then, we've talked to quite a few people, including Mr. White and others. And I think that we've got something now that we can hopefully work. The plan you see here was for 366 units. It was apartments. We thought we were meeting a need. All of the utilities we needed are close by, everything, your capacities were there. Everything was right to do this and, and be able to do it affordably. I've looked at other areas in Kerrville, people that already have zoning for apartments or, or multifamily. You just can't buy it and the utilities aren't necessarily readily available. And there's other issues. So I keep going back to this. And we came up with a, with a, an idea, two ideas. One is, is seems like traffic is the number one problem for the River Hill folks. We've been working in our office going, okay, how can we solve this? Talked to Bill. It seemed like it might be impassable. Came up with some ideas in the last few days. I reached out for him today. Basically, they just don't want to support it and didn't hear what some of our latest ideas are. And I really don't, I'm not here to present that today. And our last time I was in with y'all, we asked for R3. We got all R3. I think it was a unanimous vote. And city council shut it down completely. So I'm here today to ask for R2. Our, our idea now is an all duplex community. There's no apartments attached to it. These would have yards. We heard through the grapevine, we need some more hiking trails and biking trails. We've added those. We moved our, our rec center more central in the community. And I think it's a much, it's a lower density for sure. This is 118 units, I believe, last count, or 236 total doors. Your tech stock cuts there, it's more than apple to handle the amount of traffic based on what our engineers are telling us. Capacities are still there, especially for our lower density, even with the other planned communities. I believe this one will, will meet a lot of the needs of what I heard today. This is a, this, these are duplexes. If we choose to sell them individually, a person could buy one, they could live in half, they could rent half. If we don't have to zone it for Airbnb, it can be long-term rentals. But I think it fits a need that Kerrville needs, and it's not gonna be obtrusive. It sits down in a, in a beautiful little valley, the way we've got it planned. We're still doing the five-acre lots, the nice estate lots around it. We're only asking for 36 acres to be zoned to R2. And if, if we can get the zoning today, then I can start working more hand-in-hand with River Hill. Their problem's still, uh, gonna be, um, traffic, and I, I've got some ideas. If those ideas don't work, then great. But it takes a lot of money with engineers to come up with these concepts and ideas, to formulate them, put them on paper. And if I don't, I feel like if I don't get River Hill support as we go forward, I'll just be spinning my wheels again. And that's why I'm here alone today, I wanna do this project, I think it's needed for Kerrville. I wanna do it, I can do it affordably. I mean, doing the underground, everything, it, for us to come in and do it, it, I have no doubt, we can, we can deliver a product that, that actually is very, very nice and, and it is affordable. We've, uh, this was the D.R. Horton, I think that back in the day was five, over 500 units. We came in with a plan for 366 units, now I've got 236 units total. And we still have the, the, plus the 20, I believe it's 23 five-acre lots. I really wasn't focused to talk about that today. I think we have a, a rendering, did, did y'all upload the rendering of the, of the duplexes, by any chance?
I didn't get one.
You didn't get one? It was attached to the same unit? Yeah, no, we had some, we've got some nice renderings of, of the, of the duplexes that we could actually show you on our phone. For some reason, it didn't go. But they're quite nice, and I think that, uh, I think that as far as aesthetics go, nobody's gonna have a problem with that. The number one problem for the concerned citizens is traffic. If I can't overcome that, we're not gonna be able to probably move forward anyways, right? I, I think I could get support of a couple of people on city council, but I need, I need it to pass. I need River Hill to embrace it and support it. And the only way I'm gonna get there is show them how I can fix their immediate problem. And, but if I don't get R2, I, there's, there's little reason to move forward and fix their immediate problem. Even if we didn't do this today, they should come talk to me about what my idea is, 'cause it's different than anything they ever heard. But with that said, I request, last time I was here, I got unanimous vote for R3. Today, I'd like to get R2, I can answer any questions if you'd like.
I have a question for you, sir, what are the sizes of the duplexes?
They're approximately 1,400 square feet per side. So 2,800 square foot total air-conditioned units. They're probably right now, if I could get the renderings, I wish I could get them up for you. They're a combination of masonry and, and some hardy, but...
All single-story?
They're, they're single-story and two-story, the, uh, the, the center ones in the middle. I think those were, I think there was a two-story there too, and then the bigger ones were, do you have that pulled up? Yeah, I mean, we could show you the pictures of them, they're mostly two-story.
The north side of the property is two-story?
Yes, sir, the bulk of them are two-story. Especially on the skinnier lots, but they all have nice backyards, nice amenities. We've added the hiking trails around, um, some public dedication areas that we could dedicate to the public, where eventually, as that whole area develops out, there could be sidewalks going down towards River Hill and here and there. I mean, I, I don't know what the, what the future plans with, with the city growing out that way, but this is really the only piece of dirt I found that I can deliver a product like this and make it work, that fits within, looks like the 2050 Plan, I believe you call it. It's, uh, you know, the apartments, I, I understand now was a push, um, probably over, you know, but it made sense at the time, all I was getting was people telling me, do it, it's gonna be great, it's gonna get embraced. At the end of the day, it didn't, so...
What's the setback on that north side? I mean, away from the River Hill side, what's the setback?
Oh, there's, well, there's a large tract of land in between, I, I don't know if it's 50 acres or... So our, our feet from the, from the back of the property of the duplexes to the fence line, before you get to the vacant land, is 100 feet.
Okay, that's what I was, that's what I thought I saw here.
Right, and then, uh, you can see on there some of the walking trails that we added. Probably add some more amenities before it's over with, but, um, in my opinion, for what that's worth, yeah. I like it, I can do it, I can make it work. Anything less than this, it's gonna be really hard as a developer to come in and do your underground utilities. Everything has just gotten so expensive, but, but I think, I think this, this would work. And I think I've got a plan for the River Hill folks who I can get with later, maybe put a, a little, uh, committee together or something to work with us. And before we go to city council next time, so we're, we're supported by River Hill and not shot down by River Hill.
I appreciate it, we'll get back to you if we have any questions. I'm gonna open up the public hearing at 5:36.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question before the public hearing?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Brady Lehman.
Okay, my name is Brady Lehman, I live at 211 Castle Pines Drive. This is based on my own research, the city does not have a resource that lists everything that has been approved for development. We need a compiled list of what has been approved and what is on the docket. If this was available, I feel that the P&amp;Z committee would have a better footing on what to approve and what to take a second look at. We do believe that Kerrville is doing an excellent job thus far in providing housing units for growth, even if it's not being felt by our city yet. Rome wasn't built in a day, and housing needs are not going to be fixed overnight. These are the projects that are currently underway. The Landing, over 80 apartment units and 50 townhomes completed by the end of the year. Brink's Crossing, Block 1, 25 acres of multi-use family housing, condos, townhomes and apartments, less than a quarter mile from where this property is. Block 2, 153 acres with 133 single-family lots. Block 3, 23 estate lots ranging from 1 to 13 acres. This subdivision will directly affect the traffic problem in River Hill. Lehman Drive, apartment complex currently being built for 55 and over. The Hospital, Sid Peterson has recently acquired adjacent land to the hospital to build short-term housing town, uh, townhomes with the sole purpose of attracting nurses and doctors to live in while they find a permanent home. The Litter Home Development next to the new Junior High, this is 34 acres with 134 homes, with the range being between $180,000 to $220,000. Their sole purpose is for workforce housing. Blue Bell Estates, Phase 2, Holdsworth Drive, 43 lots. Weston Home Place, Phase 2, 45 lots. Lots of Hunter Hill, Jackson Road, 12 lots. Water Street, 12 condos. Behind the Heights, 24 lots. Holdsworth by the baseball fields, 200 acres with the purpose of holding 600-plus lots or units. Altogether, that equals over 1,000 housing units in the development phase. These new developments are well on track with the Kerrville 2050 Plan. My understanding is that 1,200 of the 3,000 homes called for by the 2050 Plan have already been established, all of which are in the parameters that are set by the 2050 Plan, unlike the acreage in question. We need all types of housing, even estate lots, lots which this property is already zoned for. There is plenty of developmental potential with the current zoning that would not have the ecological and density impact of an R2 change. We do not need to fit a square peg in a round hole just because someone is willing to build for profit and not the benefit of our town. At a prior P&amp;Z meeting, there was a short-term rental denied because it impacted less than 10 homes. If the city is going to take this into consideration, please take into consideration the impact of this zoning change on 725 homes. It also begs the question as to why anyone should invest in property in Kerrville if a zoning change is going to be a continuous issue. What is the point of doing your due diligence when purchasing property if the surrounding zoning could be, could change at the drop of a hat? We have been told repeatedly by this council, it is a risky run when you purchase next to undeveloped land. And while that may ring true for many circumstances, it does not apply to the land in question since it is already zoned as RE. A request from RE to R2 is quite a jump, especially since this specific request has already been denied due to density issues. Kerrville is a wonderful place to live. My family's been calling it home since before the Civil War, when the Schwepphalms moved here from Germany to find a better life. It is bestowed upon us to be stewards of this beautiful city and surrounding land that we call home. If we allow developments like this to happen, without thorough foresight of how it will affect the geography and movement of our town, we will become just another suburb of San Antonio with more people passing through, not settling down, and we will lose the small-town heart that makes Kerrville the town we love.
Tyler Campbell.
Good evening, uh, my name is Tyler Campbell, I reside at 256 Hyridge Drive in River Hill. My wife and I own the 55 acres adjacent to the 36 acres in question. Before I go on my speech, I would like to ask one question. The current landowner contacted us today and said this contract on this property was terminated. Is that true?
Not that I know of, no. He hasn't notified us.
Okay, so I guess maybe somebody's lying, I don't know if it's you or if it's him, but I just want to throw that out there that...
Be careful who you call a liar here, partner.
I'm just saying.
Oh, you just, just be careful, you just address us on this issue, don't be calling anybody a liar.
That's fine, I apologize. Anyways, uh, we purchased our land a little over one year ago. We did our due diligence and research when we purchased our property, knowing what the surrounding zoning is, which was compatible with what we purchased. Not more than four months ago, the same developer tried rezoning the same 36 acres to R3. This went in front of city council and was unanimously voted down by all city council members. Now the developer is back trying to tone down his request for R2 by putting in the maximum amount of duplexes. This was not a fit four months ago, and this is not a fit now. The mayor stated, "The city has spoken when they all raise their hands to deny the change." We also had 300 signatures from city residents opposing this. I understand the developer is trying to maximize profits, which is why he will build two, three-story duplexes. And I wanna say on the diagram, you can't see it, but the one he emailed us, there is 63-story duplexes on there. So, to answer that question. Anyways, these are glorified apartments with high-density housing. City council agreed this was not the right fit for this specific piece of land. Let's listen to the city and not bend over backwards for a developer just looking to make a profit. This is a glorified rental scheme in the same manner that apartments were. We bought this as a personal investment for our family to build a house on in the future, and have already done significant improvements to the land. However, if the zoning change is approved, we'll be forced to consider this as a business investment instead. We'll have to sell or develop the land in hopes of regrouping our money. If we sold, rezoning would not be required at time to River Hill. Our land currently ties into three existing streets, which would tremendously increase the traffic to River Hill Boulevard and the entire neighborhood. The zoning change poses a severe dominant effect and should be heavily scrutinized. We are not against development, we are supportive of any development that adheres to the current zoning. The land under contract has 53 acres of R2 already zoned on the south side of the property. It was zoned this way to accommodate adjoining neighborhoods, to keep the land compatible. Why do we need to accommodate an out-of-town developer who only wants a certain 36 acres of land rezoned so he can cut costs and closer to utilities? If the goal is to cut costs, what type of cost will be cut when building these rental units? The developer does not need the 36 acres rezoned to put in the type of community he desires. He can do it right now on the land that is zoned R2 without being here tonight. If this zoning change goes through, we're not talking roughly 90 acres of maximum-capacity duplexes on this one separate property. The zoning on this has already been extensively examined and changed multiple times, with the current loaner dating back to vintage heights. We asked the city to uphold the deals that were previously made on this property. There is sufficient development opportunity, as it is. And for those reasons, I oppose the zoning change.
Reagan McKay, is that how you pronounce? Am I wrong here? 103 Westchester?
I must be losing my hearing.
Oh, Peggy. I don't know why, I didn't know that was you, Peggy.
Well, you already introduced me, but the project sounds fine. His problem is Kerrville's not prepared to handle the traffic that he's going to bring us, the traffic the Renaissance has, the county development near Turtle Creek and, um, Brink's Crossing. It all combines traffic in one area, and when they leave their development, their subdivision, they go onto a highway that is not constructed to handle that much traffic. There's just not the plans for the traffic to, we've gotten ahead of accommodations for traffic. And I can assure you that city has tried to take care of traffic on River Hill Boulevard. You can pass as many ordinances you want to, but we continue to get 18-wheelers traveling on River Hill Boulevard, which is called a collector's street, but it is, doesn't even meet the minimum requirements nationally for collector's street. And the problem with 2601 is there's two separate parcels, 2601, which I've mentioned before. This one has started since 2016. We've been dealing with, uh, zoning of RE, R1, R2, R3, now we're back to R2. This is the best-looking piece of property that we've seen, or development that we've seen. But it leaves, I didn't hear all of Mr. Campbell's comments, but this leaves 134 acres between his property and this development. And the topography has been the holdup on development in this property all along. There's no infrastructure, um, that I am aware of that would accommodate a development. Every time we get a change in zoning, we always hear it's compatible with the 2050. How can an RE and an R3 in one piece of property all be consistent with the 2050 Plan? It's a moving target, and that's part of the reason why developers, he's, he's been fed information about come and build. And so, in a way, he's been invited, I can understand his position. I can understand the traffic that has no way between 16 and 173, except River Hill Boulevard, unless they go down to the traffic light where they join. Some of these developments have, in this area, have been developed as infill because they adjoin city property. But the 2050 says that, uh, infrastructure is the key to infill, not the adjoining to proper, uh, city property. I don't know what we're going to do about the roadway, but until you develop or, or get roads, I don't know how all of these developments can occur. And, uh, if they do come, and then the traffic builds up, then what happens? Then everybody's discouraged, they'll sell to anyone. And again, he's planning, not planning, but suggesting, these could be short-term rentals, they could be, uh, long-term rentals. But our problem is workforce housing, do they want, what, what do they want in workforce housing? What do the, the doctors, the nurses, the firemen, what do they want in housing? Is it price? Price has gotta be critical. Is it location? Some people are building in the county because they don't wanna pay the city taxes. So to me, the fact that he was told to, or suggested to come and build, he might have been misled because it's not as rosy as it's been presented to him. So why are we inviting development on a large-city scale when we're a small town that can't handle it yet? I think we need to slow down and catch up before we proceed with something we might regret.
Bill White.
Good afternoon, my name is Bill White, and I reside at 513 Oakland Hills. I am the president of the River Hill Homeowners Association. At the risk of repeating what's already gone before me, I want to summarize a couple of main points that have not been brought up that definitely need consideration. In addition to the council unanimously turning down, with the reason that the project, uh, the, the, that the property and the project were not compatible with this particular property, nothing has changed since then. In addition, during these, uh, discussions... In addition, during these discussions, other council members noted the eroding citizen trust with the constraint, with the constant modifications requested to the 2050 Plan. This is another case of that. It is an attempt to benefit one particular developer at the expense of all those who put that plan together, the citizens of Kerrville. Two council members specifically cited expressions of overwhelming opposition by the residents themselves. And let's be perfectly clear, nothing has changed in our position contrary to perhaps the inference that may be drawn. We had, in that particular case, 315 signatures, and it's not only Kerrville residents that were against this. Additionally, dozens of letters were sent individually to the council members. In our view, this is nothing more than a minor modification of the previous one. At the end of the day, it changes absolutely nothing. And let me interject here, too. The suggestion that this zoning change, which is significant, is allowed on the premise that he can come up or come up with some kind of plan he has to fix River Hill Boulevard is totally unacceptable to us. We have been involved in the last three months, working with the city on moving forward to address this issue. While we would welcome any suggestions he has, we don't believe that this whole decision should be based on some pie-in-the-sky idea that he has that no one has ever seen. As a result of this, at the end of the day, nothing suggests that this should warrant anything other than the rejection of it. It is our request for it to be summarily dismissed, hopefully putting any future attempt to modify the zoning of this property in the rearview mirror. Thank you.
Natalie Madden.
Thank you. I live on River Hill Boulevard, and I would just concur with what's already been said. We live right off one of the traffic circles, and it is at times almost impossible to get out of our driveway, and that's right now. It's a huge problem. I have three elementary-age children. I mean, I can't even send them to the mailbox right now because there's so much traffic on River Hill Boulevard. I mean, they can't safely get the mail because cars are coming so fast to blow through that traffic circle. So, I would oppose it. I think it's interesting that he's not, he's mentioned that he has an idea to handle that, but he's not shared any of those details. So, I would ask you to maintain the status quo, not rezone it. It's already a problem. I agree with what's been said that we need to deal with the infrastructure first. There has to be something. I mean, that neighborhood street is not really a neighborhood street. I mean, it's really an artery between the two highways. It's all night long. We have trucks and cars going all night long, all through the day. So, I would ask you to maintain the current status. It's a problem that we need to deal with, but this will just exacerbate it, and I would ask you to oppose it on that basis. Thank you.
If no other speakers, I'm going to close this public hearing. 53. Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am. I didn't get it.
Hi, my name's Darby Campbell. 256 Hyridge Drive. My husband, who just spoke, we own the 55 acres next to the 36 acres in question. As you mentioned, we purchased this with the intent of building our forever home. Kerrville's very special to me. A fourth-generation Kerrville resident. I grew up here, raising my kids here. A big concern I have, we all know the 2050 Plan serves as the policy for the future development of Kerrville. My concern is that the zoning change goes against the 2050 Plan. The first bullet point of the plan says respects and protects the natural environment that surrounds it. This land and the plan is flagged as agricultural and outdoor tourism area. This land is not in one of the 11 designated development areas in the preferred growth plan. The developer's plan is to put as many units as a property as possible. We all know it's just being down a notch, but that's still a lot of units. These will be rental units. This zoning would give the developer the opportunity to place over 240 rental units just on 36 acres. There's also R2 zoning on this land as it is, so there's no need to rezone this portion. This is the exact same scenario as the apartments. Placing hundreds of rental units up to 45 feet tall does not protect the natural environment, and it does not respect the open green space that this land was designated for. Page 32 of the plan states that the preservation of these natural areas is a high priority. This land represents the hills, part of the hills that surround Kerrville. And as we all know, this has already slipped through the cracks and has been through zoning over and over. Let's not change the zoning again, and please keep this a high priority. On the next bullet point of seeking to attract economic growth and development, the city has surpassed one-third of the 2050 housing goal in five years. A concern is if you approve everything now and worry about the consequences later, then we can easily lose what Kerrville is and what people moved here for in the first place. Many people, including ourselves, will sell and invest elsewhere if this goes in. People who are investing here rely on the city to keep the neighborhoods compatible with surrounding areas. Last bullet point of the plan, its vision statement says, "Does so while preserving small-town charm." We need to look at these zoning changes with purpose and scrutiny. We take pride in this town, and although the growth is tough to manage, let's please take care of the residents who are here. A high-density R2 zoning that allows for rentals is not compatible with the surrounding area. Indications are, well, it's been confirmed that this is a duplex community. Even though there is some R2 zoning in River Hill, we can all agree that River Hill is certainly not a duplex community. It doesn't have a duplex campus with over 240 individual rental units. There is no R2 zoning in River Hill that is close to the side of River Hill Boulevard or on Castle Pines. Changing it from RE to R2 is an extreme change and will create a density issue. This is a major change of the land use table. High-density and non-compatibility are two reasons alone to deny the zoning change. Page 129 says it's a guiding principle to maintain the quality and value of existing neighborhoods. The residents of River Hill and surrounding areas have paid millions of dollars in property taxes. They have planted roots in one of our most established neighborhoods in Kerrville. Why would we put our own residents on the back burner over an out-of-town developer? He already has the R2 zoning on the property. There's 53 acres in the back that is zoned for this currently. Let's please not make this a bigger issue than it already is. The residents are the people we need to take care of first. This is what small towns do. I think it's alarming, the plans not being followed, and amendments should not be made along the way that go against what the initial policy intended. I believe deviations should include community input, since community input is what created the plan. Hundreds of people gave their time and talent to create this plan, so let's please honor this work. I believe we will lose our small-town charm if we keep deviating from what our vision of Kerrville is. I do obviously oppose the zoning change, and I really hope we can keep the Kerrville that I know and love. And then, you know, sorry about the comment earlier, but we did hear from the landowner that this was no longer under contract, so we were a little concerned and confused over that. So, just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
All right.
I'm Doug Holmes. I live at 217 River Hill Boulevard. I guess you've heard quite a bit of detail already, so I'm stuck with the executive summary. But first of all, could I clarify something? Could you put up the plat of the proposed development? I couldn't read the fine print from... I thought I heard in the presentation that there were, a majority of the proposed units were going to be two-story, but in fact, according to that, the majority of them were actually three-story buildings, which would be 40-plus feet in height. We've been down this road as recently as three months ago with City Council, four or five months ago with gentlemen up here today. The difference between the proposed R3 zoning and the current request for R2 really doesn't change any of the attendant problems, whether it's apartments or whether it's duplexes. You're still looking at an influx of 1,000, maybe 1,500 people into this particular area. The problems that that represent have not changed. Traffic issues, the interface issues with the community, the border with the adjacent properties, none of that has changed from the previous zoning, rezoning request. Now, the other thing that hasn't changed is the 53 acres in this 168-acre tract that is already zoned R2. That's where this development belongs, not a rezoning effort into a completely different section. Now, as has already been alluded to, there was very, very strong opposition to the apartment development-type complex. That is not going to go away with this proposed ordinance either. If this goes to City Council as it is, then the resistance to that will be exactly the same as what the council unanimously rejected three months ago. Thank you.
So, I'm going to close public hearing at 6:01. I'm going to start with you, Kevin. Comments?
I'd like to just ask a question of the developer. Is there three-story duplexes on the...
As I told you all earlier, we don't want to build anything over two stories. He's right, they're right on that. These exhibits we put together in our office, the footprints will handle two-story units. We don't have any intentions on building three-story units. We can't sell three-story units, and they're not very popular for rental either. So, we'd put something in writing that wouldn't be over two stories. I don't have a problem with that. And as far as, you know, the traffic, if we could get together and put a committee together, I think we could come up with some ideas that would work. If they don't work, I don't get the project done anyways. And I just text the owner of the land and don't know anything about the contract being canceled as of today. At 4 o'clock, we were here, and if something happened, it happened after 4 o'clock.
To further answer your question on the zoning, R2 limits it to a 35-foot building height.
Anything else, Kevin?
That's it. I mean, you know, I mean, this is a need for sure. You know, infrastructure is a big deal, right? And with development and everything else, there's a huge cost to that that the developer takes on, right? And so, to get this sort of housing and different things in like that, you know, we've got to get, we've got to get the plan into the right spot so that they can make it work. You know, not all developers are just in it for the greed and the profit, you know? I mean, there's needs for things, but there's cost associated with that. So, we all need to recognize that, and I mean, I feel for this. I mean, it checks the boxes. It got rid of the, you know, the height that a lot of the, that I heard in the last time that they were worried about seeing these apartments and everything else. So, to me, I think you put a good plan together.
Wrong.
I don't have any comments or questions.
David?
No.
Pass.
Good.
All right. Thank you.
My kind of view of this is, first of all, we don't make decisions because we know or think what City Council is going to do. We make decisions on what we think is best for the city. We get overturned, we get overturned, but we're not going to sit here and either approve or deny something because you guys went to City Council and got it, you know, not approved. So, we're going to look at this project, we're going to make a vote or determination of what we think is right, not what City Council thinks. If we did that, there wouldn't be any reason for us to be here. I'm hearing a lot of concerns about traffic, and I'm hearing that there is other portions of this property that are already zoned R2 where you guys think this would be a better fit. It might be a better fit, but I don't think it changes what you guys are saying is your traffic problem. This traffic is the traffic, whether it's at this side or that side, I don't think it's going to change the traffic. That being said, I agree with Kevin. I mean, infrastructure is a big cost for a developer. We do need some type of, I don't know what you call it, workforce housing, attainable housing. There's a lot of, there's a lot of projects on the drawing board right now, but you stated about all these projects, doesn't mean they're going to come to fruition. I've seen two of those projects that you've mentioned there already that are already not going forward. So, just because something is planned doesn't mean it's going to go forward. And I guess that's my opinion on this thing. I will entertain a motion on this to approve the R2 zoning. We have a motion to approve. We have a second. We have a motion to approve, and we have a second. All in favor, raise your hand.
All opposed?
Motion passes. That's the last thing we have. Do you have a staff report, Drew?
Yes, sir. I'll give you just a second. We've got, obviously, our next scheduled meeting is October 6th. Just a reminder that short-term rental zoning code amendment will go to council this month. And then I'll be reaching out to you guys on some other potential trainings, training opportunities that we have. So, I'll be emailing you guys on that and kind of getting the consensus to see if there's interest in those trainings. So, I'll keep you guys posted.
But I'm glad to see this CCP is going for City Council, so we don't really have to deal with this anymore.
We do have, not quite done. We do have at least five for the next agenda applications already in, so...
Gee, thanks.
Those applications will, as I said before, those applications will come in until the effective date of that ordinance change. We'll see what council does with it and keep going from there.
If I've got anything.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
We're adjourned.